Okay, 5 o'clock. We'll come to the Mission Court Order, want to welcome all our guests. And to our meeting, Row Con, Ms. Laura Con.
Yeah.
In the open.
Here.
Attorney Henry.
Here.
Roger Hill.
Here.
Corner. This time we pledge allegiance to flag. Mr. Hill, say a prayer for this time. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which we stand as one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day you have given us and we thank you for our life and all our many blessings, Lord. We thank you for the great state of our family and the county we live in. We're going to our business meeting, Father. I pray that these decisions we make will be pleasing to you as when this mess, Lord, is prayed as you would lead, guide, and direct and protect us. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. We have no one to ask to speak as far as I know at this meeting. We do have our mayor here, Heffron, Mr. Robert Graham, here to speak. Mr. Graham?
Yes.
I'm going to let Tammy, our economic developer.
And I'm just going to hand out, while you're talking, I'm going to hand out the list of our board members.
What she's handing out now is a list that's on the economic developer board here, it's helping us to make the decisions we're making in the industrial park. Just to kind of give you an update on what's going on with the industrial park. We are moving forward, I know you can see the dirt's been moving out there. The land, they've beautifully closed it with the RV dealership. That'll be closing this next week. I got word from the loggers today that that should happen this next week. They've been waiting on surveys, survey, and they haven't been doing a lot from Graham last week, so he can get that finished up. So that will happen pretty quickly. And about the time that closes, our buildings are going to get cranked. So there'll be three buildings that'll be coming out behind it. The timeframe of the RV dealership will be, the slant will be in by December, it's on the schedule. We have Wednesday morning meetings from Louisiana to maybe kind of coordinate what their schedule looks like. They're really, they're behind schedule right now, but they think they'll get it caught up. One of the things I asked them to do is, Sparkland is their general contractor, so we asked them, if you would, would you use local guys? Okay? And they have been 100% on board with this. So what I did was I generated them a list of qualified subs that could do their job from our area here. And as far as I know, I reached out to a lot of those guys and I said, yes, they contacted me. And we give them all, if they're from around here and they had the GC license or they had the license to be able to do it, then we give them those names. So I gave them two whole pages of names that we need Tammy to come up with and give to them, and they reached out to those guys. So the slant will go in by December, they will be up and operational without a shadow of doubt in July. So he says they want to be open. That's on a 30 acre site sitting down low, and that's going to be, that's going to be good. You'll start seeing a lot of progress there. The road will be coming in exactly where it is. We still don't have our God's blessing. We're still waiting on that blessing of that new road. We have a security engineering firm, we're running into a few snags on engineering because we didn't realize that in the beginning, you guys in the CD started working with Goodwood Mills and Kaywood when y'all bought the property. So I thought I could go out and get prices from other professional services on the road. Once they designed that road for you guys in the beginning, then I married to it. I don't have a choice but to use them. They called me in pretty quick when I told them the price was way, it was a strong price, it was way higher. And I said, look, guys, we came for this, we got to get other prices. And they said, Mayor, you can't get other prices, it's against law. So I reached out, I got, reached out to league, reached out to other mayors, I said, in professional services, you started with them, we got to finish with them, whether it was 20 years ago or not, because they started designing the road. But we was able to go ahead and renegotiate with them, and I just told them, look, we got the money, we got the money, we just got to call the road off. I mean, ain't nothing we can do about that. So we have negotiated that down. The industrial were met on it at March today, hoping we can get that contract going on the road. Sorry, everything else, as far as the surveying goes, that's pretty much.
On this, on this, these folks here, have you got to use them, have you got those that you got to use them on? The whole project?
And use the road.
Just the road or?
And use the whole project, yes, sir.
Okay.
Community consultants, David will be doing the water in the sewer, so they're handling that. He actually had a lot better price, but we couldn't use him on the road part, so we had to use him. Coming in, running in the industrial park, you got Barbers who is coming, that's the 35 employees that tie the steering, just relax this ramp. We're still good at that, going in. We've got all kinds of buyers that have reached out to us, but as of right now, we're not willing to sell, we're not willing to do anything with it because I don't have a road yet. We don't know where everything is. I guess once land out there started going to 300,000 acre, it got, it's got crazy out there. I mean, they, I mean, it's, we got, we got interest, we got a lot of interest. So coming in, we got nearly 300 jobs coming right now. You got Loves, you got 35 over there, you got 92 at the RV dealership, you gonna have 75 at the luxury RV resort. I've got some renderings of that to show you guys right quick, I won't take up a lot of your time, show you those renderings. We got two other prospects that want 20 acres right now, but we can't give them 20 acres yet. One of them builds bumpers and truck beds for, for construction vehicles. And most time, like, if I buy my beds, they have to come out of Oklahoma. This would be a lot better place for the seating beds and all. But we can't tell them that you have this 20, because we don't know how the road's going to be designed yet. And one of the things that we don't want to do is go in there and start to buy another 20 acres and realize, hey, we need part of your, we need part of your land back. So really, the wagons that head the horse, so I'm having a slow break now. But we do got a lot of interest, we got guys that's wanting to, they're ready to go now. Other than that, y'all got any questions, anything? I just hear what you think, me and Tammy's not been working, we've worked really hard on this, we've been out there every day. David Hewitt's been, he's been phenomenal to work with, he's doing everything on his, his extra, I mean, he's going to be blessed because he's moved a lot of the dirt that we want, it's going to actually speed up our road and things like that. So everybody's just trying to work together, I mean, it's not, it's not a one man thing or one woman thing, so.
Let's say, next week, we got the ACCA coming out, we're going to be going over the CARES Act funding that the County Commission's giving. And one of the things that we can use it for is on projects that's already ongoing is economic development. It's my understanding that Mentorius reached out to them. So either, from one part of the poll that you have asked us that we could support some of the engineering fees and stuff like that, so we're going to meet with them next week. So one way or the other, either on that funding or the other funding, the mission will come and go to them on which direction they will take that, take the funding. So it probably be in our next work session that we will say it's going to come from this part.
Any funding that you give, keep in mind, they've not asked for any of that, it's only 100 acre, 100 acre site, which is good because we'll start getting taxes today going. They got that estimated low end that they'll do $10 million a year. They do $10 million a year, you know, you're looking at two, about $200,000 we ever take that's going to come into account. You know, I think, you ever take, it's about the same, I think it was even split on that lodging tax, I think it was 4%, 2 to 2. So that's, that's a pretty big chunk, not mentioning it, we get sales tax off of food court, but then, again, you got 400 feet of campus coming in on the weekend, they're going to buy groceries here, they're going to buy gas out there, they're going, I mean, it's, it's going to blow up. And we really believe without a shadow of a doubt that once they will fully commit, just be all in, I mean, they're so vague, you know what I'm saying? They keep, they're so secret, they were secret with RV dealership. And once they commit, we really believe the Waffle House will commit to David on top half and Zach's piece of commit.
On the top spots at the top?
On David's two spots at the top.
That's going to be perfect.
It would, it would, yeah, I mean, because they're going to have the, they're going to have all the business that they need. And you got to think, you got 49 workers sitting over here at Loves, you got 92 sitting at RV dealership, you got 75 working 24 hours sitting out here at RV resorts, you got 35 at Barbers, so the Easter jobs are already committed. Those people got to eat lunch, they got to, I mean, you know what I'm saying? So the exit's going to blow up, it will. We just, we concerned about getting ahead, kind of like what happened in Austin. You know, we just going to get ahead of ourselves. So we've been very careful in the planning stages, trying to make sure we do the right thing. So anytime you got input, this is your office project, just as much as it is ours, just, you know, feel free to call me or Tammy and say, hey, what's going on with this? But we'll come meet you every so often, every opportunity you want us to come and waste your time.
I mean, we're competing. We just need to figure out where's the best place for us to get the money from.
Yeah.
Because we can use the CARES Act and not pull the RV on it and take the road.
See, they won't let you use the CARES Act. We thought we was going to be able to use the CARES Act on some of that, but only if you use it on the water and sewer side or on the broadband side. Well, we already got the broadband there and the water sewer, you know, we still got some work to do on it, we got, well, we got a ton of work that we can help them with that and do down through there, but, you know, right now, I have the money on the road, but they won't let me use any of my grant money on engineering things. We got a bill for 141,000 on that before we can negotiate it now. And then we got TerraCon, we hired them to do all the tests, and it's just going to be one of those things, we just got to buy.
So you're good with us if we pull it together first or next month, are you?
That'd be perfect. Our deals will start coming in today.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to check.
I'm going to get CARES Act.
Well, I think, well, I see you might need to come after all, next, is it Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, we're in the ACCA meeting, which is, ACCA is, we've signed up the land to help us coordinate this so we don't spend some money that we have to pay back.
Amen.
We're having, we're having a meeting next Tuesday, so.
But, but in the class that we took, when we were in a conference, what, two months ago? They said that, it said on there that this ongoing project that we can use some of this money for, if you got an ongoing project that has been held up or whatever, but we're going, we're going to make sure.
We, we ended up getting $400,000 is what we got. We still haven't got clear from the league municipalities, they still have not given us a clear idea of even how we do it. I mean, so we're still, it's lost, but it's like I told them, I'm not spending a single dime of the money until I know, because I don't have the money to pay back the city's money.
I'm going to do the leaseback now, but why is it just not considered?
Last I heard, water sewer is broadband.
Yeah, it was on the floor when we were down there, it was a platform.
We could, they told me I could put my money back, my lost revenues from COVID back into budget, but they not give me a formula to calculate that yet. So, you know what I'm saying? You got to go back a year prior and then you got to calculate the surcharge, but nobody knows the formula. I mean, I went to a class with the league that had four loggers in there telling us four different things, and everybody was so confused when we left, you didn't. I was better off not to go because I didn't know, I didn't know what I could do and what I could do. So.
Yeah, and then we, that's almost the longer we wait, the more we can probably use it for, but like, wait everything.
Well, we know one expense that we definitely can use it for is we designated 25,000 to help the waterworks paint the tower. They, they just, they did that out to paint the tower out there, and they want to help with it. So they did say, yes, most definitely, if you want to pay for, helping paint the water tower. So we was able, we able to do that, we haven't gotten a check yet, but they have okay debt, but that's the only thing that we got okay dollars.
And you can upgrade any of your sewage.
We can upgrade sewage, we have.
And upgrade sewage and water.
Yes, and storm drains. We have a lot of storm drains, she wet close by roads and had ice flood in County Austin. So we can use it for that, they have okay debt, but without, I had to look at every pipe and figure all that out and ask Lee how to do it. But, you know, so we just, we got a lot of things that we got to figure out and everything.
Good job, thank you.
I want to say one thing briefly, I gave you all my card. I've been slowly getting out to the smaller resources. One of my main goals is workforce development and sustainability for businesses. So if there's a business that, that you feel I need to go save, sometimes I don't know if the places are opening or whatever, so please, don't hesitate to call me. And Loves, the date they're looking at right now is December 16th. So we really having a large river cutting, you know, big event, and I'm working with manager layers, so we're supposed to be helping to get that off.
We need you all in, we want to know, we'd like for all of you to be there and everything when we do these river cuts. So we'll, we'll do our best to make sure everybody knows we'll get it out to you, that we can get it out, all commissioners, because we don't want to leave nobody out.
That'd be cool, babe.
That's cool, babe.
Cool, babe.
Everybody is cool, babe. Anything else?
Thank you.
We're going to go to council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got to say. Lindwood, how you doing?
You're good.
Hold on, did you say?
You got Mr. Lindwood Butler here with US Farshid, he said he needs to speak to us and he would fall into this category. Go ahead, Mr. Lindwood.
Mr. Butler. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for being late, I don't know if I can. So if you can hear, if that's what you're doing. Just one issue that I wanted to share with you guys, because you all may have got some home calls from the public. Six, seven weeks ago, one of the landlords that had right next to the horse, it's off of Rule 523, the gates, to block the, to have access to it. And it was unannounced, but I've been in communication with the landlord, particularly before, trying to talk him to allow access to the public. Right now, I don't have proof that I have a prescription right away. If I went to the, with the Department of Defense and see if there was any records of it, there's none, so checking on the fore service side to see if it appears in a way that I can legally have them remove the things. Right now, he is giving us access when we need it for fires and, and that, it's Tammy. I've made a couple of offers to him, and really hoping to maintain the road, to allow public access to the area. Unannounced, I have gotten eight to 10 calls, and some of you guys have received calls as well. I received another call from a concerned citizen about the road, and he was, she was threatening some legal action against the landlord, and I told her that's, that's not my business, but that was lying, but it was totally, there is state law that the road is fairly open for all of our town, that somebody put the gate, that that gate could be removed. Again, I told her that's, that's his issue, I don't have a comment on that. I just wanted to share that with you, with you all that. I am trying to communicate with the landlord, keep everything positive, so hopefully I'm able to.
So, what, 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 what,[1205.42] Some of us have already met and had access to work with her, and we appreciate what she's doing. We had no bid openings, awards and presentations. I think Mr. Hill got his award, but he was actually absent the night he received the night. Then we have permission, but we want to recognize you for your award for completion of fifty hours of coursework mandated by the State of Alabama. Within the two years of the initial election day, congratulations to you. And you did get your award, right?
Yeah.
You hang it over here. The manor.
Sure.
Right. We have no scheduled public hearings, consent agenda. Two things on the consent agenda. One was not initial. One was the minutes.
Okay. Over.
Yeah, the minutes, I think, were not complete, so we're going to move that down to D and basically probably make a motion to table that until the next meeting. Because I think Emily has not had a chance to catch up on her absence due to sickness. And also. Item three. Concerning the purchase order of twenty twenty-one four four fifty, and that should be twenty twenty-two. And that will make that the. And then just some questions, we'll make sure that we discuss that. So, other than one and three, the consent agenda, everything else has been initial. I'd like to know.
I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. Makes motion in the state of this court. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, new business. Item A. Whereas the Cleveland County Commission advertised for applicants for the position of human resource officer. And whereas applicants were received and the commission conducted interviews of qualified applicants on October the fifth, twenty twenty-one. Where is the commission listed as an officer of the position to blank? And therefore be resolved if the commission offered the position of a human resource officer to blank as a class nine position with starting pay of eighteen fifty-one per hour effective date of October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. I don't take a motion.
Take a motion.
That's where I think. Mr. Owens makes the motion. Mr. Andrew seconded. Any? Any discussion?
Yeah, got to fill out the form.
Yes, good idea.
Fill out what?
You can fill out the form, it's my way, because I said blank, yeah. Do you make the motion?
Yeah.
You want to.
I'll write the form, Emily Brown.
And you're good with that?
Well, we can put it on paper and then come back and then, uh, sometimes we get so wacky, you know?
Okay, so offering the position to Miss Emily Brown. All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You may have a second. Item B, whereas the Cleveland County Commission has received a contract from the Alabama State University for leadership in public policy. CLPP, and whereas the CLPP will provide mapping and redistricting services, whereas the agreement for services is for a one thousand dollar deposit. Services are billed against the deposit or raised fifty dollars an hour not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission resolves into an agreement with the Alabama State University and authorizes the chairman to sign up the contract.
Make a motion.
I second it.
Mr. Hendricks, motion, this court. Any discussion?
Or like coming here, we gotta go there.
He can come here, he said he would come here. That's what he told me over the phone.
And money's as combined as ever.
Yes, I guess it's debatable whether it could come out of election, I don't know. I mean, I guess that'd be the audit question. Audit is supposed to, in the past, we never, I don't think we ever used the election vote for that, but I guess that's.
We can just pass it and then allow this Lisa to figure out where the best place to make money.
It is going with election, but I guess that would be a question for them whether they'll use that. You think that's a good question to ask?
It is a good question, and for the commission's education, Lisa sent the agreement to me, I've reviewed it. The only thing I don't like is that the venue for the agreement would be government tenant. But of course, that's where the university is, and that's probably their standard clause, so other than that, the contract's good for the chairman to sign if he all approve it.
Any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, sorry.
Motion carries. New business, item C, whereas the Cleveland County Commission would like to regulate manufacturing homes we move within or into Cleveland County. And whereas the Cleveland County Administrator prepared a rough draft of proposal for opinion from the county attorney, and whereas the county attorney has repeated regulations presented by the county administrator and made a busy correction. And whereas the regulations, regulations document to make the approval of the commission, therefore Cleveland County Commission agrees to send this document to be considered by the state legislature.
I'm approving.
You second?
I'm opposed.
Yes, ma'am. You, was you second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would like to select to keep what I gave you about it for the original document. Everybody's got a copy of it. Because the way this reads, this is the resolution that Kim prepared. Well, I took Kim's resolution and then some from other Kims and put them together, which I think's a better deal. It's not a finished product, which in any sense of the last week, it's not a finished product.
All right, so are you good with that?
Um, I think we need to, first of all, we discussed this, so we haven't had a chance to read over it yet. So I'm not ready to pass anything until I have time to read it.
Let me ask.
It's a, it's a living document. What you gonna read is not what they gonna do down there anymore. We can change it when we present it to, I talked to Mr. Rice and I talked to Mr. Fenter. And they're both going to push forward for, but they both told me that they would get rewritten down there. But anybody's welcome to change anything they want to, it's not something that come back and go on and complain.
If you approve it in general form with follow-on comments by the commissions as they review the documents that have been presented, and then once all comments are included, it can be sent down. Legislative drafting is gonna rewrite it.
I, I just.
But the original, the original one was just, I wouldn't know a lot of, you stay past the original one because it didn't have any like in it really.
And we made the resolution, she is not necessarily asking for an amendment, is there a need for an amendment because of the resolution that was read?
No, it's just substituting this version from the previous version.
Okay. The resolution reached, the county administrator prepared, well, they didn't prepare this, I mean, I took two of every, just put them together.
Okay.
At the time, if you don't want to have this one become previously, that's why I.
It's gonna, it's gonna rush, or you say this like a R F team, like R F.
Oh, yes, it, and that's.
I mean, we, everybody just needs to, I mean, this is we talk, everybody just needs to read it, download it, what you don't like, what you do like, make changes or whatever, then we just put it all together and hand it to the ring and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we just take this and what the other kind of written, making changes.
I don't want to wait till next month meeting, I won't. We need to, we can pass this without, it still ain't changed.
But it'll be like we changed it all the way to.
Yeah. I mean, it's down there, I sent it, maybe I have one bill in the house, maybe I have another, and then they gotta go back to the version, so. But if we keep waiting, it's not gonna happen.
This court, you make the motion. He seconded. Is there something?
I just, like he said, I just want to be able to make changes, I want this to be the draft that's going to them without any changes yet, until we do.
Okay.
Because we haven't had a chance to go through that long enough.
And that way, do you know, certainly, certainly just want to share?
I'm sorry.
Would you, would you be impressed with the deadline?
I'm sorry.
Would you be impressed with putting a deadline on your changes, and that way you'd be able to ensure that it's the one you can spread those like during the time?
Well, I thought the range is five, it's four, it's nine, it's one. So we can do that. So we can do something. I have a good one. Five, five, what I said, so we can do that.
You actually, did you just actually take some of the other ones in?
I took, I took, I took Kim's, I took things, Ken's, George's, I sort of merged them. Took out a few lines here and there and substituted a few lines of mine on it. Like I said, it's a living record, plenty, I wasn't gonna change the order, didn't change it. We, we, we need to, we need to record the nation, I suppose, rather than.
And, and you could simply change the end of the resolution that's in the document with the agenda that says send this document to be considered by the state legislature, no later than. October fifth, twenty nineteen, the last Friday of the month. That way, if you, um, if you discuss it, circulate around, get it back to Lisa so that she can put it together, and get it submitted by.
And he agreed with this document that he's got.
I repeat the original, I was reading through this one tonight.
I guess, because I see it clearly, and I know this has been where I've been in much time up today, is putting a year on it, you know, paying misses as such as a house or a home is ten years old or less. And I know that's always been a big question, definitely putting a date, a year on it, so that, that was one of the questions I wanted to change.
I just started looking at this one.
Do you want to, I mean, so that has to be finished by October twenty-nine?
Yes.
You don't care that minute? All right, so there's been a minute to the bad, so we can drop that down on that resolution. Any, you got a copy of that? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is. The. The concerns passing the minutes, and I think, uh, because of. No problem, oh, just behind the minutes. To take. That second one, which goes, any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is concerning, uh. There's some questions concerning the resolution of number three. Whereas the county attorney requested a P O for purchase for a twenty twenty-one four F four fifty, whereas that time is allowed for delivery off order and change to twenty twenty-two for F four fifty. And whereas the county attorney also changed the order from two-wheel drive to four-wheel drive. And whereas the original P O request was thirty-four thousand, you request to change and cost to thirty-nine thousand five hundred forty-two dollars. We need to issue that for Cleveland County Commission, agrees to make a testament to the amount approved to purchase that vehicle and approved increased along the mail. I entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Have a second.
I'll say it.
Okay, I think the second discussion was concerned about, uh, and I think they've been working with, and I'll let you explain, you got some notes on this?
I do have some notes on it, I actually did use a lot of the work on it, because she's here, hearing times, this came about. But she has been back and forth with the auditorium, she's also been with the state to make sure that there was no problem with the law as far as the changes to the vehicle. And the conclusion is, is that it's okay on our vehicle like that, you can actually change it, make small modifications like that, like doing from two-wheel drive to four-wheel drive is okay. The only thing we're willing to do is just do a little bit of a thing on the, on the requisition, and just sign off on this that it's a twenty twenty-two instead of a twenty twenty-one. Of course, the state, we're, we're in good shape as far as it goes.
Are you everybody content with this one? Make sure, so it's gonna be a twenty twenty-two? Okay.
Make the changes to twenty twenty-two, and move forward.
And it wasn't a concern about the state auditors saying going from the two to the four, are they?
The auditors have a little trouble with that, but they did say go ahead and contact the state about it, and once we did that, forever.
There's, there's provisions in the state for the, for the.
Right.
All right, that's.
And it's, it's kind of a little bit vague to me in a way, because they say the worker purchases, and where does that, where does that line? And I, I probably think it's very certain that I will with myself, because I just found out about that today, so. But I did, thanks for you signing off on that, but it should be fine.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second, and any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Would like for you, I think they're making two possible resolutions that we might want to add this evening?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, now I'm gonna read the resolution to see if y'all wanna add this, and I think Ms. Copeland has one also. Whereas Lisa Malinkovich, human resource officer, submitted her letter of resignation by email to the commission chairman and each commission on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Whereas a settlement agreement and release of all claims and contract agreed on by all parties involved. Therefore, the commission accepts the resignation of Lisa Malinkovich with her last date of employment date in November the first, twenty twenty-one. As a part of the agreement, Ms. Malinkovich will continue to assist the new human resource officer until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And that needs to be added first before we.
I make a motion to add it.
Mr. Owens votes aye, and the second is Mr. Hendricks. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, it's now added. And it's a F. Now. To rank that motion, we take, we kind of got so much on, and I just read that, so.
I just got a question on some negotiation of the agreement, if there's any changes made to that.
Just, I'm trying to make a motion, we need a second.
Then it's a motion for you to discuss. Okay.
Make a motion, okay?
Second.
Second, okay. Now, will you?
Uh, is there any changes made to this agreement, I just don't know, you know, the commission has, I don't know if y'all have time or ready or prepared it. But if y'all wanna make any changes to it, should we go into the third session, discuss it for five minutes, but if there's anybody who's making changes, if not, we'll leave it on the table like we said.
I haven't seen it, so.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm. Chair. What?
We need to open the second session.
I'm fine with it.
This is what Ms. Hicks.
I didn't know, I thought this was an agreement that we were intending to approve or not. So is it?
And I think she said all to everybody, she said the original.
But it's, nobody's any changes to be made from an email, I think, everybody got an email.
Well, that, it is in there, I'll be with the person.
Yeah. Before it is.
I haven't seen it, so I don't, it's been changed, I just received a phone call last week, which is wrapped around to my email this morning.
So we have a motion on the table and a second. Yes, sir.
If Lisa hadn't saw it, and hadn't agreed to it, I could move it in.
I have not seen it, I just received a phone call last week, I, I have not seen it.
Well, I think we need to, I think you'll have to table it until the person that it concerned briefs that are agreeing.
Well, I mean, she, she still has to sign off on it, which she agrees to.
Okay, so if there's a change.
This is, this is, and, and you correct me if you're wrong, I know, I know this is not what, I know Ms. Hicks did this, but. Um.
You got a copy of it?
I have it.
Yeah, I think all we got to do.
I got, okay, that's reasonable, but I'm just saying, it's steering away, this resolution is steering away. I understand what you put down, I mean, what's here at the bottom, but it, it's, it's, it's this sign, this is the agreement, not this resolution is, is, is saying we're agreeing to it. If you steer away from that, then you can't have, well, we can't change that. Because right now it's written, it's sent, all the commissions have read it, if you have read it, that's what I read, that's what I agreed to. Now, if the person that it claims that has, that said that says she don't got a bone, well, she hasn't read it, so we can say we're passing it. But then it's really not passed, because we're gonna have to have the changes, it's got to come back.
Well, here, what you're doing is you're making a motion.
Now.
To offer her, she still has to, I guess, sign off, sign over on this.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
If she doesn't agree, then, then I guess there's gonna be some.
Changes, okay.
Changes.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Okay, that's fine, I'm, I'm.
Or, you know, unless you wanted to amend the motion so that, you know, and that's the only thing, it's not a motion to be, with the chairman. Or the chairman, the county attorney to observe it or sign off on it. So. That's, that's up to, that's up to you, is it?
But I think if there's a change, if there's a change in the, in the writing of the agreement, once the person who checks says, and marks it up and sends it back to you, or hand it back to you. Then it's like, well, that's a circle in the final approval of that one.
Basically, what you have before you is you're making an offer.
Right.
If there are any changes, that constitutes a counteroffer.
Okay.
That will have to come back and be accepted.
Right.
If you make the offer and it is accepted without change, it's done.
Okay.
But if there's any counteroffer, that serves as rejection and continue negotiation.
Okay, okay.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion and a second to make this offer.
Right.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Copeland, we explained the resolution that we, I think we had talked about, I think that it failed to be on the agenda or whatever, I have to put it in the.
Um, we've gone about the credit cards.
Yes, there was something that tied into, what was that resolution that was in our?
The sign that said, uh, prevent a shit coming.
Yes. And, and I made, made a statement, we should have made that then, but we're having a problem, you not only need to, but you need to do what.
I need to have the ability to use a counter credit card, because we do pay for some administrative services with a card, it's the only way. Like our email service and our website service, those have to be done with a credit card, it's not what they accept payment, so. Or just administrative purposes as possible, you know, for a trip or something, or educational items or something.
You have a resolution?
We did not know a resolution this time. It was, we can add it.
We have not, we have not.
You just add it to it tonight, and that's kind of critical thing, because she's got to have the ability to use it.
Because she's also got to get the.
Yeah, so then, as it is, so.
I can, I can recite one quickly if anyone is interested.
I make a motion that we were stopped.
Go ahead.
Whereas the Cleveland County Commission understands that the county administrator plays a critical role in county finances. And whereas the county administrator is not currently an authorized user of the county credit card. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission authorizes the county administrator to be added to the county credit card as an authorized user for all necessary purposes.
Well, you need, you need, you need a credit card, because a credit card is it. And, and it's, it's not saying it isn't a credit card.
So making a motion, I think, would just be to add this resolution.
I make a motion.
I second.
Any discussion on adding this resolution? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. So you, you're, you're currently resolution so that she would be able to.
Secure her credit card?
Yes. Now.
I make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Okay.
Sorry.
Second. You getting all this signal, it's a lie. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Did we cancel, do we?
Yes.
We did.
That's, and I'm just saying, we're saying add it to what, there's no limit to add it to, so you gotta do a new credit card.
Now.
That's all I'm saying.
Recent, I mean, recently, our, our website had run out, and I had put it on my credit card, but I was reimbursed recently for that, and I paid for that.
So we need to start a process to get a new one.
So it's.
If we had to cancel that other, you could just took that one off, and then go send your other one.
Well, I think it was linked, so linked to the county administrator, because somebody had, they used her social security number, and, and that's why I see canceled there.
What is the limit you want on that?
I'm sorry.
What is the limit on that card?
I have not heard answer on that yet, I'm trying to find that out, but I'm not sure.
What is, does, does anybody know what the, what the hash and hash circle is on the credit card?
So it's like ten thousand dollars?
No. I don't think it's like that much. Because probably, you know, because once, they did the prices, and then they send in checks, or it would just kind of.
Oh. Okay. So. About that?
I don't think it would be that, would it?
I would be able to take it there, pull the, pull the AP back and see, but I think that would be.
Okay.
Let's, um. Say five thousand.
That's.
Unless she's looking at it, says ten thousand, but no more than ten thousand.
Right.
I give her that?
Yes.
I mean, that's.
But you never know when you have an emergency, that's something that happens, what can you do?
No more than ten thousand, you give her that, listen?
Yes.
Okay, good. So all in favor, any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I don't think we have to add anything else, I think that's it, okay? Uh, county administrator, Ms. Copeland, you have anything that besides that, that you need to add, how's things going for you?
It takes a while, I gotta get personal, get the revenue, learning something every day.
Just gotta learn to speak louder, get the microphone.
Okay. That's one of the things I learned. Just, you know, settling here, I can do it a ton of time, but I've got, I've got something to do, and I'm learning a new job.
We appreciate you. You have any questions for Ms. Copeland? Okay. County, you mean?
I don't know, you wrote it.
Know you wrote it. How's it going on the seventy-one readings, is it getting a lot of traction?
It is.
Yeah, a lot of traction?
I've lived across it once.
I like.
I have lived across it.
But I'm not likely to write about it anymore, because I got spanked. When I link to charity.
Can you get the board for each dollar, or we can cross it?
Well, I will write, I have the word, did you get the contract about the safety status?
Next week, go get a road.
It's still set up? Are those still there?
Yeah, everything's working. We have contracted A to two shot this week, out of stock, uh, stones like all of them. But we're going to see coming in the morning, so hopefully next year, A to. Fortunately, we have to work, uh, re-shot, and after that, we'll start to grass, and it's gonna, that's all we're doing.
Um, the other end of that, if you're gonna come out and give us some of those plans, five, something.
The, um, the thirty-five, again, we're gonna come from the station that we reclaim, we'll get double shot, and we'll bring that top shot all the way out to thirty-five.
It's sort of like, when I'm logging, you know, they tore that age, and so it's, I'm actually, I was calling to go out there, but it comes back.
Well, we should.
That was, when I went to there Sunday, it was like, what? But I mean, we're very long, so.
Any questions, really? The show?
No reports.
Okay. There is no oak business? Discussion odds by charity commissioners, any, any men? Anybody got anything? I'll entertain a motion to the chairman.
I make a motion.
Second. All in favor saying aye?
Aye.